So we're quite fortunate this evening. Our item seven is actually a presentation from the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. Barry Broom will be presenting to us this evening. I say we're quite fortunate. I believe all of us have heard Barry speak before and I think both, I know that I will find this beneficial. I think the city staff will find this beneficial, the audience in the audience, and then if anyone happens to be watching at home, they'll find this beneficial. So, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for having me, and thank you for supporting. So, you know, Mayor and I spoke, and, you know, I've been working with the Davis community now for a few years, and I appreciate having the opportunity to come and present. And, you know, I've been in the job long enough now to where I ought to be able to have a more deeper integrated relationship with the multiple communities in this region because, you know, I got a little better understanding of them. I mean, when you're new to California, you're very new, I found out, you know, and the challenge about California is you read so much about California. I actually arrived thinking I understood something about California, and I was here about six months going, wow, I really don't know anything about California. So those books weren't that helpful. But now that I've been here three and a half years, and have worked closely with the university and the city, and, you know, have paid close attention to the issues, you know, I wanted to kind of have a framing conversation on what's going on in the region's economy, a little more straightforward on some of the things that we do, and then, you know, really just kind of lay out a conceptual idea about how I would like to see us think about innovation, the relationship with UC Davis University, and the role of the City of Davis. So the city's role with the university is, you know, crucial, and this relationship is crucial because, you know, it's a relationship that empowers the university. And if you empower the university, then the university is really the most critical asset to the economy in the six-county region. Because people are looking for knowledge workers, they're looking for innovation, they're looking for creativity. You know, we're not a cost winner as a state. I like to refer to us as a premium brand, so if you want to hire light industrial jobs, you're going to go to Nevada or Utah. But there's a very compelling story, in my opinion, on how to elevate the region and elevate our economy, integrate it in a sustainable way, and find the balance. One of the things that I've learned in working with the community is not becoming San Francisco is a really important part of the conversation in the region. And I think we can be a region and a community that really sets a standard of excellence for California, because, you know, we have a lot of challenges as a state. We're a large, complicated state, and there's a lot of economic and social challenges for us, and how we work together and how well we work together is really going to be how well we solve these problems. So, we use, we are a public-private partnership. We're the only public-private partnership in California, per se, where we have the CEOs on the board who sits with a mayor, and a university chancellor, and a president of a Sacramento State. And together, you know, share conversation and ideas and govern the effort on how we work together. And that's something I'm really proud of. And when you think about communities you may really be impressed with around the country, they have a long history of having a legitimate network of leaders at the table having this conversation, because the expertise is shared, the resources are shared, and the influence and power is shared, because there's tremendous power in the city government, a county government, a university, as well as the CEO of VSP, or the CEO of Dignity, or the CEO of the Sacramento Kings. So, from an organizational standpoint, you know, in a state that has had too many, you know, one of my thoughts on California is I don't know why the business leadership isn't more engaged. So, when you look at other states, the business leadership is much more engaged, and not just in their own interests, but engaged in education, engaged in infrastructure conversations, engaged in sustainable neighborhoods. And so, one of the things that was really important to me was that we brought CEOs on this board so they weren't just, you know, passing through the night when they were in our community, you know, just making it out to the airport, running their company, maybe showing up at the country club, maybe getting involved in a charitable organization. But this organization actually introduced the CEOs of this region together. So I literally introduced the president and CEO of Rayleigh's to the president and CEO of McClatchy, and both of them were Sacramento natives, and been in their jobs for over a decade. And their headquarters were 1.2 miles apart, but they had just never met each other, and they didn't see, they didn't have a natural network. That's really unusual, because in markets like Seattle, Denver, Phoenix, Dallas, those CEOs are heavily networked, and of course, their civic roles are what they network on. And, you know, they do incredible things like, you know, build United Week campaigns, support universities, so on and so forth. So, we have 42 CEOs on our board, and the goal of the organization is to get the CEOs to truly capitalize it, because it's their civic responsibility to help the community. And since they're business leaders, their work on the economy ought to be something more intuitive, and then their relationships and their networks are more valuable to us. And then there's enough public investment in the organization to matter, and they share power, and they share the governance model with the CEOs, and it allows the CEOs to learn from the mayors on what their unique challenges are, and then those CEOs can contribute to the mayors and the city managers on what they're dealing with as a business. So it's kind of a cross-pollinization of expertise and talent, but it's also designed, I'd rather have CEOs on our board involved in the community than moving their business to Texas. I'm going to first talk a little bit about, you know, how we take evidence, how we take information. So a lot of people see us as, you know, you're a business recruitment organization. Well, I look at that as a service. You know, we're really a complete economic development model that helps all the communities understand their value proposition, help them integrate together, get the data and evidence to make better decisions, and then create support for them. One-third of all of our investment is just on analytics. So I have five people that do nothing but manage analytics and evidence. So if Diane calls our office and she needs evidence on a plan, if you're asking your economic development team to think something through, very often, they're coming to us. We're doing all the analysis and the research, and we're sending it to them, and for the compensation that you make in the organization, you can't replicate it. It's also designed to be able to create value for you you can't pay for or typically have yourselves inside your government. Like, it'd be very unusual for a small city to have five full-time analysts. But when you pool the money, you can do that, and everybody shares in the data. So the Brookings Institution is really the most impressive institution, I think, in the country at understanding regions, but also understanding how they grow economically, and also help them understand how they can grow in an inclusive and sustainable way. Because inclusivity is a critical part of our economic objective. As you know, we're becoming a haves-and-have-nots economies, and of course, there's going to be devastating consequences if we cannot figure out how to elevate people into the modern economy, rebuild the middle class, and create a sustainable life for everyone. I'm a big believer in the old saying, "Everybody does better when everybody does better." So this win-lose-have-nots economy is very dangerous, it leads to a lot of social unrest. I came up in Ohio and Michigan. So if you saw last couple of days, the General Motors plant closes in the Midwest, I mean, it's extraordinarily devastating to these communities. Some of these communities, it's literally the only economic base they have left, and, you know, it's a painful thing to see. So my hope has always been that, you know, I can share those experiences with people to get that pencil sharper, to get people more on their toes, to think more in terms of preserving their economic future, and being very sophisticated in the effort to sustain it. So the Brookings Institute, you know, you know, one of the things I think we've had a challenge is the Sacramento region and Sacramentoans in general kind of feel like we're peaking, and there's a lot of sense that things have never been better, and we're really on the rise. And they draw that conclusion because of how they look and feel about the community. So when you put a several hundred-million-dollar arena downtown, and you've got 15,000, 20,000 people there, and you stimulate restaurants, and Davis has always been a farm-to-four community, but now some of these communities that never had amenities are now getting these amenities, and people economically are seeing the amenities as a sign of economic stability, when in fact, you know, what it really is, is a sign of changing consumer behaviors and patterns, the more inclination for people to spend entertainment dollars in their own community, and just, you know, the enjoyment people have of being in the center of their towns. Your downtown thrives, Roseville thrives, Elk Grove's got a downtown on the rise. But it's not really a true indication of economic well-being. So at the Brookings Institute, you can see growth, prosperity, and inclusion. The ranking of the region is very difficult. And then if you look at a poverty situation, essentially, one-third of the residents in our region are low-income, and as you can see, like, a lot of communities, people of color are being disproportionately impacted. So it's always a fine balance between being excited about our opportunities, but reminding the leadership, there's a lot of work to be done, and, you know, let's not whistle by the graveyard, let's actually work on these issues while we got economic upside. The two greatest indicators that we have as a region is we have a good, strong demographic trend. We're a young region, we're attracting young people, so we have good top-line economic growth. We actually will outpace U.S. economic performance between now and 2025, but like a lot of communities, we're leaving a lot of people behind. And then also, we have some sustainability issues that we need to be concerned about, most notably, our dependency on government jobs. So why does this matter at the regional level? Well, there's our dependency on government jobs. And so, about 258,000 jobs, and, you know, depending on how you translate government jobs, a lot of these government jobs translate to healthcare. It's not really a stretch to say 33% to 40% of the region's economy is tied to government. And of course, being single-dependent upon one industry, and then having the threats that we have on government, the pension issues and things like that, and then, of course, government also isn't a tradable sector. So tradable sectors are really important, because they have long legs in their job performance. So if someone puts 250 government jobs in a community, you know, you might see another 125 jobs, maybe 100. If someone puts 250 agricultural science jobs in a community, you might see another 750 jobs. So the economic lift of the region to elevate other people and to allow your activists that are working on key social issues to plug into the economy, very tough to do with a one-dimensional economy with government. So in addition to those poverty numbers, this is the eighth-poorest region in the United States now, Bakersfield, Modesto, Fresno being one, and then we're second in the United States in young adult unemployment. And so not having entry points for youth, not having an economy built around tradable sectors, and I'll talk a little bit more about that, makes it harder for inclusion. So the irony, the government town that people have kind of enjoyed because it's stable and reliable, is really the very thing, not only that's creating long-term sustainability, but it's one of the reasons why we're so impacted in economic well-being, because there aren't any legs in that economy. So obviously, a big part of our regional partnership is to leverage and promote competitiveness. So when you can offer UC Davis graduates at the research level, and SacState engineers at the applied level, and two-year technical workers at the community college level, and not, you know, Davis is an exclusive community from a income standpoint. So, you know, it's, you know, Davis is the second-most educated city in California, second only to Palo Alto. So when you lay out Davis to a venture capitalist, you get a much different reaction than if you were to say Sacramento, because, you know, Sacramento is viewed as a government town in Silicon Valley, but Davis, and UC Davis, is kind of viewed as an untapped resource. So when you work regionally, you're able to shift your economic assets around different economic conversations, so you can elevate your investment potential. Some tech companies now want to be in an urban center, and they want to see if midtown can make an appeal to their, you know, 26- to 34-year-old workforce. You know, some people are looking for, you know, a more high-end experience, and even where Davis is at, with the traffic over the causeway, the closer proximity to the Bay Area, so I always like to refer to Davis as the front door to Silicon Valley for the region. And then it resonates. And then once people understand Davis and the university and Silicon Valley, you know, then maybe other investments from that area might look at a Roseville, something that may not resonate, so to speak, in Silicon Valley, because it doesn't have the evidence or the cachet or the reputation to differentiate themselves. So Davis kind of pulls those other communities along in that conversation, whereas maybe in a corporate setting, on a build-out, Roseville might be more user-friendly as a community. So Roseville pulls people along on a build-out from a corporate standpoint, Sacramento pulls people along on a digital urban setting. So each one of these communities is bringing a different service to the regional economy, and how you manage and optimize those is a big part of our competitive leverage. Obviously, we talked about tradable sectors. We want jobs, employers, that build products and services here and sell them nationally and around the world. So the kind of fancy term for a tradable sector is if a business has four or 500 employees. So we have two companies right now that are looking at this area. One of them's a biotech company that has a significant relationship with India and the East Coast, and the biotech company has pulled a technology out of UC Davis. So the biotech company's coming here because it has a technology relationship with the university, but it may go look for a low-cost real estate play in Rockland. Okay, so now the company may be in Rockland, but the technology's coming from Davis. And so each one of these tradable sectors will create different values. So maybe there's a license income play at the university that leads to more spin-outs in Davis, and then, you know, if a company's scaling and expanding, they may choose a Rockland location. But that's how you kind of mix and match the tradable sector with the local cluster. And then again, on the top line, as you can see, GDP's pretty good, compounded annual growth rate of 4.9%, industrialization growth. So these top-line growths are pretty good, but they're not robust enough, and they're not deep enough to offset the government dependency, and then it's creating the have-and-have-nots economy that we want to avoid. So one of the other things we do is we build new target sectors. So the one that I probably am spending the most energy on is this next-generation automotive background. So I have a lot of experience in the automotive industry, and there's tremendous interest in California and next-generation automotive technologies, because our state's got a great reputation for being early adopters. So CARB, which is the California Air Resource Board, to give you an example, which is in the state capitol. So the regulators are actually more important to a business than the procurement process. So a lot of people in the region think the state capitol's buying power is economic leverage. It is some, but it's really the regulators. So like when Centene selected Sacramento for the 5,000 jobs, I mean, the regulator and the insurance commissioner was evaluating how they were handling the acquisition of Health Net. So when the company came in and said, "We're going to put 5,000 jobs in the state capitol," you know, it made the regulator feel a little bit more comfortable about the company's decision, and then, you know, the acquisitions a little bit easier, and the state of California can see a win-win, that they're allowing an acquisition that'll increase healthcare, but they're also getting 5,000 jobs. So we think CARB, the California Air Resource Board, is a powerhouse. So we really think CARB has basically built Tesla. I mean, that's the short answer. So the demand policies of the California Air Resource Board, you know, paying attention to pulling carbon out of the economy, that's created the market for Tesla. So our conversations with CARB is really more as, okay, we created a market for Tesla, but there's a lot of opportunities in electric vehicles for jobs and autonomous vehicles, and we want to make sure we're paying attention to a job capture strategy while we're building this new industry, not building a carbon-free economy in California and then letting the employment go to Utah, Arizona, and Texas, where they're operating on coal. So basically, what's happening now, like hydrogen trucks and a lot of electric vehicles, they're going in these low-cost states. These are low-cost states because there's no regulations or standards on industries, as well as very few taxes, but also because those states are using coal power, and they're getting four cents a kilowatt. So the irony of this with CARB, if we capture the jobs, you know, we're not rewarding the kind of carbon play that's going on outside our state. And we're working with a group called PEM. They just entered into a joint venture with SMUD. They have designed most of the clean technology for mobility in Europe. So they've been looking at a California location, and we hope we're very close to getting them there, here. They are very interested in mobility. As you know, Dan Sperling here at UC Davis is one of the reigning experts in the world in transportation mobility, so they're very interested in working with UC Davis on the expertise of transportation mobility, and how these new shared services and electric vehicles will work. And then they're also very interested in working with Sacramento State, which builds great engineers on the applied side, but they really want to partner with CARB and create technology solutions for CARB. So it's a lot more sophisticated than promoting, you know, so you've got to design these things. Once you design them, the investment and jobs come, because these partnerships create so much value. And of course, you know, we're an agricultural tech leader. We've been working with a major venture fund that we hope to announce in a month. It could be one of the largest food and ag venture funds in America. It'll operate out of Davis. And then, of course, you know, health and life sciences, not only do you have the medical school in downtown Sacramento, but out in Elk Grove, there's a proprietary medical school called California North State, that's actually very impressive in pharmaceuticals. So how do you connect Elk Grove on the pharmaceutical side with, you know, basic research in Davis, and then a partnership with the medical school in Sacramento? So all these assets have to be tied in and integrated together. Another reason why we do workforce, workforce is regional. So this is one of my favorite things, because, you know, this is actually the highest number. So Davis residents, 29% of Davis residents work in Davis, and that's about the highest in the region. But like in Roseville, 17% of Roseville residents work in Roseville. So when communities get parochial over jobs and investment, it's really an inertia, you know, it sort of throws sand in the wheels, so to speak, when in fact, they're all sharing the same success story. So I always like this, 10% of Davis residents work in Sacramento, and 8% in Woodland, and 3 in West Sacramento, so you're getting 71% of your jobs from these other 18 communities. So it's really important to have that cooperation, because no one community can host its economy, and as you create this cooperation, and you, you know, create this leveraged relationship, you can raise jobs for everybody, and then, of course, if they're tradable sectors, and they focus on favorable economies like clean tech, now you're creating a cleaner economy, and you're lowering poverty, and you're sharing economic benefits regionally. And then that becomes your brand. So when people want to know what your community brand is, you know, if we become a leader in this mobility technology, and then we prove that we can make it an inclusive economy, meaning it doesn't have a have-and-have-nots economic benefit, and then while we're doing it, we're lowering the carbon footprint, that's how you get a great reputation in the marketplace. So marketing your reputation is not as important as actually having one, because I've tried that, it doesn't always work. So the other thing, too, so you make a $26,000 investment a year in the region, and of course, between the analytics and doing these partnerships, you can't really do that for $26,000. So we also pay attention to your returns. So these are different economic models, but you get about 180% return from tax income on your investment. So the reason you see these states work so hard on economic development, and California needs to help us more in that, is if you do it right, it's a profitable proposition. Obviously, if you saw where Governor Walker got defeated in Wisconsin, you don't want to give a $300,000-per-job incentive to Foxconn, because that's why he lost that election. So Wisconsin's putting more money in Foxconn, which is 13,000 low-wage jobs, than they're putting money in the University of Wisconsin. And that didn't work out for the governor when he ran for reelection. So, you know, you don't want to be incentive crazy, you want to have a balance, you want to pay attention to it, you want to know how to supplement your economy, but you're really going to build your economy around great infrastructure, great cooperation, skilled and talented people, and your propensity to innovate. So this is kind of a little theme I threw up in my head. So, you know, working around food and agriculture, you know, 2050 is this really important moment, because the multiple to figure out how to make food and ag more efficient is not catching up with the need to feed the world. So when I think of research parks, and I know it's been, there's been a research park planned since 1994 by UC Davis, there's 174 universities that have research parks. So it's a bit of a frustration that we haven't been able to figure out how to take this research park forward between the city and between the university, because what really happens on innovation, even though like Woodland's doing a food and agricultural park, they're not going to really capture innovation, that's eight miles away. I mean, innovation has to be within 200 yards. It has to be within a quarter of a mile. So if you look at these great research parks that have been developed, whether it's Stanford, Purdue, I'm going to show you a couple of models, University of Madison, the exchange between industry, commercial technology, and important solutions like, how do we feed the world in 2050? That is a point-blank-range relationship between the industries that are trying to solve the problems, the faculty that are developing the contemporary research, and the students that are being trained to go into the industry and solve that problem. So you have to have a triangle between, here's the, you know, here's the Bear Crop Science H.M. Klaus, trying to solve this problem, here's the students that are being trained to work in the field for the future with the most contemporary excellence, and then, you know, if you know Justin Siegel in town, the guy's a genius, you know, we got some of the smartest people in the world inside this university building these technology models. So if you don't set the stage for them to interface closely together, it basically thwarts innovation, and it hurts the ability to achieve this. And I think UC Davis has a chance to be, you know, one of a handful of the most impactful universities in the world on climate change, farming, food security. And so one of the objectives, and I think it's lost, is its jobs and taxes and its real estate, and then you have a community that, you know, is a premier community that doesn't want to be overly impacted with development, and so you get some tension behind that. And I think if we think about the research exchange between the university and the community, that what we're really trying to do is empower ideas that match the values of the residents at Davis, and contributes to the success of California, the region, and the world, we'd have a different conversation about that. And that's how I look at research parks. So I talked a little bit about the, you know, incredible need to meet food trends in 2050, and the contraction of farms, and the labor issues. So, you know, we've spent a lot of time, and I know enough to be dangerous, but, you know, we spent a lot of time on agricultural science, and vertical farming, and all the different groups, and, you know, it's amazing, I mean, the amount of top-tiered leaders in this field that fly here just to talk to this university. If we can figure out how we can leverage that and capture that a little bit, I think we can find a good balance between what's good for the city, what's great for the university, but also what can be a global objective. And I'd be really excited to think that a partnership between our organization, the city, and the university actually made a compelling impact on the future of the world. And this is exactly how it's going to happen, right? So, I'll take you through a couple of things. So, we're dangerously dependent upon jobs, government jobs. And I'll take the University of Wisconsin. So agricultural school, veterinarian school, medical school, engineering school, so ag, vat, med, engineering, there's only two universities west of the Mississippi that have that. It's University of Wisconsin and UC Davis. So you know Berkeley doesn't have a medical school, you know, UCSF doesn't have an engineering school, so the engineering school's obviously a component on that. And so the ability to be able to cross, and the university does a great job internally, you know, with its One Health Initiative and all that, of talking internally together, you know, we need to do a better job of getting them to talk to us and help us talk to the marketplace, because it's an insular institution, as you know. But when I was talking to the Faculty Senate about, hey, I think we should benchmark ourselves against the University of Wisconsin, they were a little offended, because, you know, UC Davis academically and from a scholarly standpoint has a much higher standing than the University of Wisconsin. But if you're an economic developer, look at the economic impact University of Wisconsin. So these are identical universities. So a lot of people say, what are you going to do about this government dependency? What are you going to do about inclusion? What are you going to do about these tradable sectors? I mean, UC Davis, I mean, University of Wisconsin, this is very reliable data, has almost produced 200,000 tradable-sector jobs in Wisconsin, not nearly as attractive as California, and not nearly as attractive as our region. Yet, you know, this is 30, 40 years of work, but it shows you the potential, and where do you get these solutions? So whether it's inclusion, technologies to impact sustainability, economic dynamism, protecting us against dependency on government jobs, 100% of that could be solved by UC Davis in a comprehensive, committed partnership over time. So having UC Davis sort of dabble in it, not to be disrespectful, you know, and then have all the consternation we all have in the region between real estate and all this, you know, it sort of gets treated like an annoying thing by people. And I want to put these numbers out here, so people understand that not only is it an incredibly missed opportunity, but it's a missed opportunity to protect us, protect the world with technology, and protect ourselves with sustainability. And University of Wisconsin's a powerful institution, and from a university standpoint, $1.1 billion endowment versus $2.7 billion. So, University of Wisconsin gets incredible private-sector and support for their accomplishments. And so if you look at the state of California, you know, higher education cuts have been the norm. I think with the pension challenges, it'll continue to be the norm. So we need to move our universities to more enterprise models, so they can impact our communities, but also so they can sustain themselves. So what happens, these universities use their ability to interface with industry as a key recruiting tool to get the top up-and-coming faculty, who want their ideas in the marketplace. And then Research Triangle Park is another one. So if you look at the job performance of Research Triangle Park, UC Davis, Sacramento State, and Berkeley, and I think we need to think more about capturing Berkeley, it's 60 minutes away, there's Berkeley graduates all over this community, we're the number-two Berkeley alumni location. So Berkeley has forever interfaced with San Francisco and Silicon Valley, and at, you know, 6,000 bucks a month for an apartment, and, you know, 2 million bucks for not the greatest house, that's not going to continue. In fact, one of the statistics I don't have, for the first time in the history, the number-one goal of a UC Davis graduate is to stay in this community. That used to be like 10%, 9%, 12 years ago. That's now in the high 40s. So if you ask a UC Davis graduate, where do you want to be when you graduate from UC Davis, they say, "I want to be here," because they've been here, they love the community, "I want to be here." And so when we don't produce these economic outcomes, we lose our college graduates, and we're actually last in capturing our college graduates, which goes back And we're actually last in capturing our college graduates, which goes back to that economic model. Tradable sectors suffer, innovation suffers, and inclusion suffers. So, there's a lot of connectivity to elevating this institution. Research Triangle Park, famous all over the world from an asset standpoint, if we capture Berkeley, not even in our league, not even in the same conversation. So, but we learn from these. And so, you know, how do you take Davis 2050? And there's a lot of talk about Aggie Square and, you know, you know, sometimes I feel like I know what's going on there, sometimes I don't. But I see Aggie Square really more about biomedical research, you know, novel therapies, medical devices, where you need to be around a medical school. But this is the community that's going to host the technology and the ideas that are going to help us with climate change, food and agriculture, new energy policies, things like that. So, they're very complementary developments and very complementary objectives if we can get them on a common trajectory and understand where they separate and where they connect. So, I'm going to leave these as an invite. February 10th to 13th, I'm going to take a handful of people down to Research Triangle Park. It's not as fun as Brooklyn, but, I mean, we're actually going to go there and evaluate the stuff. So, we'll go over there and run over their financials and meet with their economic development people and really understand, you know, what they're doing with their economies. And I think one of the things we need to do as a community is let's go see the people who look like us, who in some cases do not have the same economic proposition as we do, and yet they've managed to find the right balance between, you know, you can still buy a house for, you know, $250,000, $300,000 in Research Triangle Park. I mean, they're not dealing with congestion. They're not dealing with million, $2 million homes. You know, they haven't raised their carbon footprint, but they've managed to stabilize their economy. And North Carolina, as you know, was dangerously dependent upon textiles and tobacco. It was quite poor in the 60s and 70s. Now, it's one of the more successful economies in the South. And then, in May, we're going to go to University of Wisconsin so that people can see, they now have developed 3,000 acres at the University of Wisconsin. And Madison is a lot like Davis. You know, it's a highly educated, very intelligent, very dynamic community with very committed people. And I think you'll find out that the residents in Madison have found a way to have that institution thrive, drive their economy, help their state, but not put them out of balance. And so, that's my goal, is how can we learn, educate, you know, engage each other? How do we pull these important, compelling technologies out of this university that have incredible potential to impact, you know, human sustainability, not just our own community? And not compromise the objectives of the Davis residents of keeping this, you know, a quaint, beautiful, special community? And I think we can do that. So, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Would you be available to answer some questions from myself and my colleagues? Do you have any questions, Dan? Go ahead.
Sure. When we've talked before, you made the point to us Davisites in the room, it had to be at least five separate times. And I took it to heart that what we need is a place to have these great companies. Would you talk about the importance to our community of having an innovation center? You alluded to that before.
Yeah, I think first off, I mean, one of the things you can always do is you can always manage economic prosperity if you do it right. And so, being in Ohio, I'm a little upset over these GM announcements because, you know, I spent seven, I grew up in Ohio. And the reason I'm an economic developer is I grew up in a community that lost all their jobs. My dad lost his job. And, you know, that's like I always tell people, hey, if I grew up in California, I might be a cool guy in Silicon Valley, but I didn't. You know, I grew up blue-collar in Ohio and saw the plants close and saw uncles lose jobs and friends, families, and people get thrown out of their house. So, I always looked at that. That's always seared in my mind when I see successful communities that, you know, you can always continue to be successful if you work hard at it. But sometimes you get caught, and no one ever thought they'd end up where they are in Ohio and Michigan. No one thought. The reason they're so stung back there, they thought General Motors was going to build five plants because, you know, the president told them that's what's going to happen, and they supported him because of that. So, they're shocked that they've had this huge economic hit. So, to me, when I look at our region, you know, to me, I would love to see the city of Davis, you know, have a global reputation as a city and a community. And of course, we have a great reputation inside California, but I would like to see that resonate nationally. I think from a sense of community pride and long-term sustainability, the ability to attract talented people, that's an important part. And then, two, you know, it's always good to have a tax base. And you don't necessarily have to, you know, build more big commercial properties. I mean, you don't need to do a Walmart to build a tax base. And, you know, what a lot of people don't realize is 2/3 of a tax base is the disposable income of the people that live in your community. And so, if you, even if you took something like 500,000 square feet, which would not change the whole ecosystem here, or a million square feet of really sophisticated innovation labs, which we can get done, you could put 2,000 or 3,000 really elite jobs there, collect the income, not impact your bikes, not impact your green space, not impact your housing, not gentrify, not throw you out of balance, collect that income, but also, you know, be part of a broader conversation in the world because, you know, these aren't software engineers. You know, it's not like we're going to go out here and, you know, throw up Twitter. You know, these are, I mean, Evolve Biosystems, which is being built here right now, I mean, they're developing, you know, biodegradable plastic. Can you imagine if you created a legitimate, environmentally-friendly plastic, you know, the incredible global impact on that? And that's a UC Davis technology. That company just closed another $40 or $50 million, and it's the real deal. And a lot of these companies could be, in my opinion, these companies will succeed more successfully in their mission if they have better infrastructure in the city of Davis. And I don't think they can do that by hopscotching in the woodland. And if Evolve Biosystems becomes a 5,000-job employing region, you know, they can keep their 150 researchers in Davis, put their 50 people in their headquarters, and stick 4,000 people in Placer County. Or you may decide at some point you want to do more to capture that. So, as you build that innovation base, it keeps your options open to change how you need as a community. And you can do it and keep yourself in a really good, sustainable position.
So, I had a question. So, you had that slide which showed some of the challenges. I think one of the stats was a third of the households had sort of a struggling, you know, were struggling economically. So, yeah, if you could, yeah, go back to that, that'd be great. Yeah, so, you know, these stats are fairly sobering. So, maybe, and maybe in very kind of simple steps, you could talk about how sort of the economic development helps address some of these challenges that a region faces? Because I think for our community, a lot of times, people are generally fairly successful and feel fairly comfortable. And they're not sure how this economic development will sort of improve kind of the folks that are in the region that are sort of struggling. So, maybe you can kind of walk us through in very simple steps, you know, how this would occur.
First off, you have to create jobs that they have access to. And then, you have to create workforce training paths towards that. So, the other thing we did with the Brookings Institute is, you know, the state of California does a good job at funding training. We have more training resources than any place I know of in the country, in our region and throughout California. But, you know, it's anecdotal training. And so, basically, what we're doing with these training dollars is we're training these kids for low-wage jobs. So, we're putting them unintentionally in a trap. Some of that is sort of the perspective we have of them, right? So, you see an inner-city kid, well, you don't see that kid going to UC Davis in your mind. Too many people won't admit it, but it's true. They don't see that child going to Google. So, they go in and say, hey, have you ever thought of, you know, working in the, you know, back kitchen at a Marriott? Well, yeah, it's $15 an hour, and I can teach you this and give you a certification. Well, you can't do much on 15 an hour, or 18 for that matter, right? So, part of this is getting into the community where the constituency lives and start to change how they're trained, how their approach from the workforce system, that they're in fact a valuable asset. So, the beauty of inclusion now, you know, it's a major mission of most corporations because there's such technical workforce shortages, they're actually going into the inner city now. I mean, Seattle does a fantastic job at training women who have been chronically on welfare to go work at Amazon. And I don't mean in a fulfillment center. I mean, 80, 90, 100, 120,000 dollar a year jobs. So, to me, a big part of this is, you know, how do we disrupt our workforce model and go in with much greater sense of optimism about what people that are being left behind can actually contribute economically? That it isn't about stabilizing them off of welfare, but it's actually about putting them in a lifestyle that many of us enjoy. So, that would be step one. Two, you've got to have jobs that are close to them. Because when you're bringing people out of poverty, and I worked 10 years in the inner city in Cleveland, so I was a civil rights officer, I did neighborhood organizing in Cleveland, Ohio, organized Public Housing Authority. So, I have an anti-poverty, that's what they used to call it back when I was doing it, an anti-poverty background. Now, it's inclusion. So, if the jobs are kneeling, that's one of the reasons why Aggie Square was important to me, is it's in Oak Park. So, now, these kids in Oak Park, if we do this right, if you train them up and you get them thinking differently about their future, they're going to be able to walk to a high-wage job and be trained for it. So, step two is some of those jobs have to be in proximity. And then, three, you have to make sure that whether it's the investment, or the real estate, or the infrastructure, or a business climate, or a small, smart incentive, that you're doing the things necessary to encourage the companies to be here and to grow.
Thank you. And I guess while you're here, you mentioned the distance from the university. You said a quarter of a mile, a couple hundred yards, something like that. Can you talk a little bit more about that as we sort of think about sort of pursuing partnerships with the university?
Yeah, yeah. So, if you look at Madison, the University of Wisconsin has a 3,000-acre research park, and it's a little bit of ways out. But there's two steps before people get to that 3,000-acre research park. The first step is they spin out of the university in a very soft, early-stage, emerging technology experience. You know, they're writing their intellectual property, they're publishing their disclosures, they're prototyping and testing, you know, their products. And so, if you thought in terms of what your research park would look like, the 500,000 or the 1 million square feet, the first step out the door, these would be these specialized facilities that would help people develop molecules or work on genomics platform for agricultural science, or prototype a device of some type. Maybe it's a, you know, maybe it's a digital device to help people manage water on a farm, you know, so on and so forth. So, having that first step out the door, that's really underwritten by foundations. So, these aren't necessarily privately done. These are kind of public-private partnerships. They have philanthropy involved, usually state money. And you create this experience right within a stone's throw of campus. It'll never happen, so I'm not calling for this, but, you know, where the Mondavi Center is, and you know the beautiful vineyard across the street from it, I've already, I've mentioned it once, so I'll never mention it, but that would be like a great place for a research park. But we know that's never going to happen, so let's just say I never even said it. But that would be like, that would be the place where I would first do it. And then, you know, from there, as these companies emerge, well, maybe they go into the Ramus Development, or maybe you have a downtown development, or, you know, they go into another community in the region. So, University of Wisconsin, when you walk out of the classroom, if you're a faculty researcher, you walk out of the classroom and you walk less than 200 yards where your invention's being developed. Now, once it's working, like Evolve Biosystems, okay? So, if Evolve Biosystems actually hits it, who knows where they would end up being, right? They may need 100 acres one day. But, you know, if there isn't this clean transition from the technology in the university to the entrepreneur, to the innovator, and there's a soft landing for them, and it's all set up and made specially for them with the targeted industries, the likelihood of success drops 90%.
Well, we really appreciate you taking the time to come and make a presentation here.